Okay, I've started it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh. I don't have my script here, but we need to uh start the meeting with uh. Uh.
Roll call.
Minutes or roll call?
I'll take, yeah, I'll take roll. So Mr. Hilsinger, Mr. Sneed.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham is absent. Mr. Medel?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
So that's seven. And then we have the minutes from the November meetings.
Yes, make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second, uh, have someone second that?
Second emotion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How many people do we have online here?
There are seven commissioners present.
Okay, that then that's seven. Is there?
Good.
Got that?
Yes, seven zero.
Right.
Then we don't have any committee reports. Um, we have new business items.
Okay.
Good evening. Um, PC twenty-nine dash twenty-three LaShawna K Douglas was a request for a conditional use permit in the R three Residence District, um, proposing a childcare center on a tract of zero point four three acres located at the terminus of Air Court approximately two hundred seventy feet south of Siesta Lane. As the commission may recall from their November public hearing, this site is located in North County and to your right on the screen is the aerial with the site outlined in red. Here's a larger aerial view. This site is um in a subdivision along Air Court, um, so it's surrounded by other R three Residential District with um some commercial frontage along Redmond Road and Lusher Road. The petitioner came before the planning commission requesting a conditional use permit in the R three uh ten thousand square foot Residence District to permit a twenty-four seven childcare center. Um, at the public hearing, the petitioner noted that up to thirty children could be at the childcare center, um, and only fifteen children would be permitted to stay overnight. The petitioner noted that they would re would utilize the existing residential home, but no one would live on site. Um, the preliminary site development plan that was shown to the planning commission at public hearing um does show reutilizing the existing single family home and four parking spaces, one in the garage, two in the driveway, and one on the street. Staff would note to the planning commission that if the petitioner was to have thirty children on site, they would actually need five spaces and not four that they proposed. Staff would also like to note that per the zoning ordinance, um, they would need a ten-foot setback for parking and the petitioner does not meet that currently. As you can see with this red line on the preliminary site development.
Just let me clarify on that. The ten-foot parking setback is from the property line along Air Court, so ten feet back from the curved part of the cul-de-sac. Um, they had shown parking spaces. You can see that first parking space would be within uh would basically be making up that would be inside of that parking setback. I also want to note that Wayne, Mr. Hilsinger has joined the meeting.
Alright, so staff is recommending denial. Um, as the proposal fails the four-pronged conditional use permit test, while childcare facilities are desirable in St. Louis County, the proposed operation as described does not fit within the characteristics of a residential district and is not desirable for the public health, safety, and general welfare of St. Louis County. Without a residential component to the use, um, where the operator lives on site, the use is not appropriate at the end of a residential cul-de-sac and thus not consistent with good planning practice. The intensity of the proposed use and the increased traffic could also prove um detrimental to the permitted developments and uses surrounding the site. And finally, conditional use permits, once granted, they do run with the property, so while a childcare center is a desirable use, the proposed operation as described at public hearing is not appropriate at this location. So at this time, we ask for a motion.
Okay, we need a motion?
Make a motion to deny it.
Second emotion.
Go ahead.
Discussion, right? Well.
Christopher.
There are second.
And I can. But Chris wants to uh have a question.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, thank you.
Yeah, I I'd like for uh them to elaborate on the second bullet point there, the without a residential component. Wh- what does that mean?
So right now, the petitioner has a license for a home daycare from the state of Missouri, so the zoning ordinance permits home daycares when you have a license from the state in the residential districts, and that limits an operator to caring for no more than ten children in their own home. So right now, she lives on the site and she has the rights to run a childcare center to care for ten children. When she goes up above ten kids, or you know, it intends to care for more than ten ten children, she no longer is considered a home daycare, she's considered a childcare center. So it's a a different type of childcare center, but what she's indicated to us is that if she gets the conditional use permit and thus the property rights to care for more than ten children, her intention is no longer to live in the house like she does right now. And our concern is that without an operator living on site, uh, that this isn't appropriate in the residential districts. The childcare centers we see that don't have an operator living on site are more what you um, like the kindercares of the world, um, more commercial style childcare centers. But what we found is that especially at the end of the a short cul-de-sac like this, without someone living in the home as well, this would essentially operate much more closely to the commercial style childcare center, if you will, and that's where a lot of our concern comes from.
Thank you, Mel.
Anyone else?
I ju- I just like to add that you know, when you have fifteen children, is that what we're talking about? Fifteen children staying all night?
On the site development plan, she indicated twenty-four children. Um, and then her intention would be, since it's a twenty-four hour uh childcare center, she would if child children were cared for overnight, that would be no more than fifteen children.
Mel, just to kind of clarify too, um, at public hearing, despite her preliminary site development plan, um stating twenty-four, she did say multiple times that it would be up to thirty, she could go up to thirty children uh on the site.
But fifteen, but fifteen overnight?
Mm-hmm.
In a, in a home that's, that's what size?
Would you go back to the uh site plan, Gretchen? Don't think it's labeled on there, but it is a one-story home. Sixty by twenty-five?
I thought it was around a thousand square feet.
It's not more than probably sixteen hundred square feet.
I'm not gonna talk about the rest of the neighborhood, but I'm talking about the safety of the children and herself to have that many children in a home staying all night, fifteen, fifteen kids from, I don't know what early age to what older age altogether, and I think they told us at a certain age they don't take care of them, but um, just a better reason to deny this.
Okay, anyone else?
I was, this is CND. I was also gonna mention that it's a traditional subdivision. There's probably indentures, and I don't know how the subdivision indentures play in, but a home-based business was probably allowed, but a commercial no business is probably not. So I'm not sure. I'm sure that has nothing to do with us, but it's still a something that they're gonna have to deal with.
Okay. Anyone? Seeing none, we have a motion to deny. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, and we'll go on to uh PC thirty dash twenty-three, Melanie Huddleston.
PC thirty dash twenty-three Melanie Huddleston was a request for a change zoning from the R five Residence District and Floodplain Residence District to C eight Plan Commercial District and Floodplain Plan Commercial District. Um, the petitioner was proposing an adult daycare office for in-home care facility, medical office in all C six Office and Research Service Districts permitted uses. Um, the tract size is two point two five acres and it is located on the east side of Halls Ferry Road, approximately two hundred feet north of Capital Drive. As the commission may recall, this site is located in North County and on your right is the site outlined in red. And just here is a larger aerial of that site again outlined in red for you. The petitioner is requesting the change in zoning from the R five and Floodplain R five uh Residence District to the C eight Plan Commercial District and Floodplain Plan Commercial District to permit an adult daycare office um for in-home care facility, medical office, and all C six Office and Research District services um that are permitted by right. The petition wrote noted that they plan to reutilize the existing six thousand eight hundred square foot building. The main floor includes two large parlors with large partitions um with separate entry and exit doors, as well as a lobby offices, kitchen, and quiet room. The lower level includes a lounge, conference room, offices, and storage. The petitioner did note that the adult daycare would have no more than twenty adults um that they were in the care of, and the medical office is actually more of a medical spa which provides aesthetic treatments such as Botox, microdermabrasion, and hair loss and retention. Um, the proposed hours that they presented at public hearing um for the adult daycare were eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday, and the medical office nine AM to two PM Monday through Friday. The preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing um shows a hundred and three existing parking spaces, again reutilizing the six thousand eight hundred square foot building, um, five existing light standards along the back of the parking lot. Two would be proposed um for both areas near the entrance and exit of the site. They would, um, staff did reach out to the petitioner after a public hearing just to confirm um the petitioner's intent for signage on site. Um, the petitioner did note that they plan to reutilize the mark existing marquee sign, and they will also do a wall sign like the former religious institution had prior. Staff is recommending approval of adult daycare offices and medical offices. Staff does not recommend extending the zoning to permit all C six Office and Research Service District uses as some of those um permitted uses could be too intense for the site and non-character with the area. Um, however, commercial zoning is appropriate along Halls Ferry Road, which is an arterial road developed with a mix of residential and commercial and institutional uses. The C eight Plan Commercial District um procedure is the appropriate land use mechanism for this proposal, and the proposed use of the site for an adult daycare and medical office is in keeping with the commercial development pattern along the this portion of Halls Ferry Road. The site was originally developed as a funeral home and subsequently a religious institution. Both institutional uses were desirable in proximity to residences, and it is also true with the proposed use. Staff, however, does have some recommendations for the site development plan um revisions, including a front yard buffer of one tree and four shrubs per twenty linear feet to enhance the visual quality of Halls Ferry Road. We also recommend architectural review um to be approved by the planning commission. And we also note that resurfacing of the parking lot should shall require the installation of concrete curbs um when the petitioner does choose that option. And finally, the trash enclosure shall be interior to the building or located in a trash enclosure with a six-foot tall site-proof fence. So at this time, I do ask for a motion of approval.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Sandy seconds. Discussion? Anyone? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, and we'll go on to PC thirty dash twenty-three and thirty-three dash thirty-three Islamic Society of Greater St. Louis.
Good evening. PC thirty-two and thirty-three dash twenty-three Islamic Society of Greater St. Louis Corporation is a request for a change in zoning from R three to R one with a conditional use permit in R one to develop a symmetry on a tract size of five point three nine acres located at the south side of Parker Road approximately one twenty feet east of Roseme Drive. As commissioners may recall, the site is located in North County, and to the right of the screen is a subject site outlined in red and which is also um a part of a larger parcel. And this is a larger area photograph that depicts how the subject site fits into the surrounding areas and most surrounding zoning are surrounding zoning are R three Residence District. The petitioner is requesting a change in zoning from R three to R one to condition a use permit in R one to develop a symmetry. As commissioners may recall, the petitioner stated that they use the Laurel Hill Memorial Gardens, but burial space is non-limited. And um as commissioners may recall, so symmetries are not permitted by rights in any zoning district. It's only permitted with a conditional use permit in non-urban district and R one Resident District. At the public hearing, the preliminary site development plan shows um a new cop court along Parker Road. It's a hundred foot long drive, twenty-three parking spaces, including two eighty accessible ones, no proposed buildings. And um it's a, the petitioner stated and from their presentation, the grave site was going to be twenty-four square foot with twelve square foot space between grave sites, and the estimated capacity is five thousand three hundred with the first project phase to develop fifty grave sites first. It's also, the plan shown at the public hearing shows walking path for six lawns area designated for grave sites, the retention of the existing tree mass, no freestanding business signage were proposed, and no proposed so on the site. Staff is recommending approval because the downzoning is appropriate and reasonable for the proposed development. The proposed use is of less intensity than the surrounding use in the R G Residence Districts. The conditional use permit procedure is the appropriate mechanism, and we ensure the proposed development is developed in a manner that does not detriment surrounding uses, and also the proposal meets the four-pronged CUP test, which are it is desirable for the public health, safety, and general welfare of St. Louis County. It can be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to surrounding uses and is also visually compatible. And also, it is consistent with good planning practice. However, there are some revisions that we'd like to see on the site development plan. The first is a minimum of fifty foot setback from the western and southern limit of the development, a minimum of twenty foot parking setback from the western property limit, and also plantings along the access drive on Parker Road and throughout the parking lot. So at this time, I'm asking motion of approval.
Okay, we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it contingent upon the recommended revisions being applied.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Uh, discussion? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Let the record show eight zero, and we'll go on to thirty-four dash twenty-three, Scott Hortiz.
PC thirty-four dash twenty-three Scott Hortiz is a request in change in zoning from M three to C eight Plan Commercial District to um to permit office, warehouse, and vehicle service on a tract size of one point five one acres located in the west of the Mifery Road, south of Old Lima Ferry Road. As commissioners may recall, the site is located in the South County, and by my my right is the subject site outlined in red. This is also a larger area photograph that depicts how the subject site is situated among surrounding uses. Again, the petitioner is requesting a change in zoning from M three to C eight Plan Commercial District to permit an office, warehouse, and vehicle. The proposed use is not a traditional vehicle service center as defined by the zoning ordinance, which include oil changes and monitor and minor tune-ups. Um, the nature of this vehicle service is photography and specifications for collision measuring programming. This preliminary site development plan shown at the public hearing retains the existing nine thousand one hundred square foot building. It retains lighting, the existence signage, trash enclosure, landscape, and also the cop court on Lima Ferry. There are also eleven parking spaces shown on the site development plan, including one eighty accessible that would be restricted. And also during the public hearing, the petitioner stated that he would like to widen the loading bay to allow for easy movement of vehicles. Staff is recommending approval because the C eight Plan Commercial District procedure is appropriate land use mechanism for this proposal. The proposed uses are appropriate at the site, and we surrounding permitted development. The type of vehicle service proposed, which is photography and examination of vehicle specification for collision measuring programming is of very low intensity and appropriate at this location. The petitioner also stated that also stated that it's gonna have like about two, maximum of two vehicles in a week, no customer, and no traffic be generated. Some of the revisions that we'd like to see on the site development plan is um and some of the recommendations we would like to make is that no outdoor storage of vehicles or equipment is permitted and no temporary signage permitted on the site. We also request for an architectural review to ensure that modifications to the building are visually compactable with development along the Mifery Road and surrounding land uses. At this time, ask for a motion of approval.
Okay, we need a motion?
No movement.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Seeing no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero, and we'll go on to uh old business ready for action. First item, PC twenty-five dash twenty-three Wheatman Properties, three.
Good evening, commissioners. This is PC twenty-five twenty-five dash twenty-three Widened Properties Three LLC. Uh, the request is for an amended development in the M three Planned Industrial District, F uh Floodplain Plain Industrial District. The proposal is to permit warehousing, wholesaling, storage, and metal processing on a tract size of three point one nine acres at the southeast side of Wideman Road, approximately four hundred and thirty feet south of Manchester Road. As commissioners may remember, the site is located in West County, and you can see the site outlined in red in the aerial on the right. This is a larger aerial with the site once again outlined in red. The petitioner's proposal is designed to facilitate um the creation of the national rarities business at the site, which catalogs, stores, and liquidates rarities purchased off-site at buying events. Um, at public uh hearing, the petitioner initially requested a permission for a smelting use at the site for treating precious metals. Um, that particular use, and then also a proposal for uh warehousing firearms proved controversial both for folks at public hearing and then also um community members following public hearing. Uh, the department would like to note that following public hearing, the petitioner confirmed that the the proposal is better characterized as melting instead of smelting, and that they would not facilitate firearm transactions outside of their firm's activities. Uh, the preliminary site development plan uh shows the retention of sixty-nine parking units, uh, the retention of the existing eighteen thousand square foot two-story office building, and the retention of existing landscaping. Uh, the department uh in kind of preparation for addressing the concerns that were raised at public hearing and following, um, wanted to note how air pollution is regulated uh in St. Louis County. Um, first and foremost, industrial uses are subject to the operating standards detailed in section one zero zero three one six five of the uh, the zoning performance standard regulations of the St. Louis County zoning ordinance, and all odor, smoke, toxic gases, and emissions of any particulate matter must not exceed the emission levels as relayed in chapter six one two Air Pollution Control of the St. Louis County uh revised ordinances. So to start with that first concern um about the distinction of melting versus smelting, melting is the process of liquefying a solid substance through heating, and smelting is an intensive industrial process by which a metal is separated from its ore by heating a substance beyond its melting point. Um, further consultation with the petitioner's metallurgical consultant confirmed that the proposed use is better categorized as melting as portrayed at public hearing, um, and that correspondence is included in your packet this evening. Um, to uh further conduct the necessary due diligence, the petitioner contacted the Missouri Department of Natural Resources, or MDNR, to determine whether a permit for construction of the proposed furnace would be required. Uh, that request was then redirected to the St. Louis County Air Pollution Control Program Team, who determined that the proposed use would emit negligible potential emissions and that the electric furnace was adequately prepared to reject cadmium and cadmium alloys, and thus no air construction permit would be required. Um, and that correspondence is also included in your packet. In terms of the federal firearms license, uh, federal firearms license permits an individual or firm to engage in the business of manufacturing, importing, and/or dealing in firearms. Um, a representative of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives affirmed that FFL holders can refuse to act as the intermediary between separate entities to facilitate unaffiliated gun sales, um, which was a concern that was raised at public hearing. Um, and the petitioner has never acted as a pickup location for shit firearms and has um confirmed to the department that that would not be intended in the future and would not pursue those kinds of um exchanges. At this time, the department is recommending approval. The department believes that the M three Planned Industrial District procedure is appropriate for the location. Uh, notes that the location is characterized by a density of commercial industrial uses. Um, the lack of a retail component will mitigate the likelihood of increased congestion in terms of foot traffic and then also um automobiles on the accessing the site. Uh, the department believes that federal, state, and local regulations of proposed firearms and melting uses offer appropriate oversight and that uh both of those uses are relatively modest in scale. Uh, at this point, with the, I'd like to request a motion.
Okay, we need a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
No one? What is meant by um, can you go back to the previous screen? Where it says uh federal, state, and local regulations of proposed firearms and melting uses are appropriate oversight, but prior to this, we said the melting, they don't even have to have a permit for it.
I think basically that that indicates that um the St. Louis County's um team has, you know, conducted the appropriate kind of met, you know, oversight of their proposal, and thus, you know, we um determined that their opinion is a valid one, and we kind of follow their direction.
But what what happens a year down the road if something faulty? I mean, are they gonna keep working on the air quality and that? Or do they just do this one-time thing and say, yeah, you're good to go? They don't come back and check it a year from now or two years from now or?
Sure, um, and and Commissioner, I'm I'm not certain how the air pollution control program, whether they um go and verify that multiple times. Um, I would note that every use that um that produces emissions are subjected to chapter six twelve of the Air Pollution Control um portion of St. Louis County revised ordinances, and any proposal at this site that would trigger those types of uses would be subjected to those ordinances and um to that sort of overview and oversight.
Okay, well, I'm not familiar with the ordinance, but does the ordinance allow for them to come in and do inspections on a routine basis?
Uh, to be honest, I am, I couldn't, I'm not certain how um chapter six twelve is structured. Um, so I would have to leave that description to the Department of uh Public Health, um, how they would conduct that.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a question about the individuals, um can you go back to the slide that talks about the? The owner doesn't intend to sell firearms to individuals.
It's not, it's it's um for clarification and the intention is not to sell it to individuals, the concern was that. Folks or entities who have federal firearms licenses or F F Ls can facilitate. Uh, the shipment of purchased firearms for pickup for unrelated. Um, you know, the sales that they're not participating in. And that particular activity, um, the the petitioner has never participated in the past and has the right to refuse. Um, if approach for, you know, facilitating that kind of exchange. Um, in terms of the firearms that they do sell, they tend to sell them um. Usually at larger quantities, um, but to individuals and groups, um, you kind of via online platforms.
So Jacob has an F F L, I could buy a weapon and, you know, he lives in town and I could say, hey, Jacob, can you receive this weapon for me? Because I can't just have it shipped to my house. Can you as an F F L receive this for me and then I'll come get it from you? The concern at public hearing was that this petitioner would be acting as that middleman. But what they've indicated is that they don't do that and they also have the right to refuse that people try to use them for that um facilitation.
But nothing in our um. In this petition states that they can't and won't do it. Just because they say they don't intend to doesn't mean that they can still, right? Like.
I think I follow you the, so since retail is not a permitted use at all, they could, the only way they can sell their goods is is wholesale. And that's what we are recommending approval of that they be able to then wholesale these goods, but they would not be able to. Do a, you know, customer to business sale, which we would consider retail because that won't ever be permitted. As they've requested and as we've recommended, so that lack of a retail component is what also would preclude that from happening.
But the but the pickup location, they could do that if they didn't sell it, but they were. If they were asked to receive a firearm for an individual, they could do that.
Not not without basically violating the this ordinance if adopted and in the terms of their occupancy. Because then they'd basically be conducting in retail, which their occupancy permit wouldn't cover. But if they came back in five years, say to the county and said, actually, I do want to do retail sales here or I do want to. You know, receive firearms and then and then sell them, they they'd need another zoning action.
Okay, Sandy, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that the revisions are part of the the staff recommended revisions are part of the motion. Is that true?
If you accept our recommendation, those conditions are part of what's drafted.
Okay.
Yeah, we're adopting the uh staff's recommendations. Anyone else have anything to add? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay, but the record shows seven to one. And we'll go on to uh. P C twenty seven dash twenty three Real Estate Partners Ken LLC.
This is P C twenty seven dash twenty three Real Estate Partners X LLC. Uh, the request is for an amended development in the C eight planned commercial district. The proposal is for all C three shopping district permitted uses, including a self-storage facility. Uh, the track size is nine point four seven acres on the northwest quadrant of South Lindbergh Boulevard and East Concord Road. As the planning commission may recall, the site is located in South County and you can see the site outlined in red on the right. This is a larger aerial with the site once again outlined in red. Uh, the petitioner's proposal, uh, they seek to occupy the former weekends only building. Uh, the petitioner's central tenant is Dogwood Social, a restaurant and entertainment center. Uh, proposing occupying roughly twenty thousand twenty nine thousand square feet. Um, a self-storage facility also around twenty nine thousand square feet and additional retail. At uh twenty two thousand five hundred square feet will also occupy the existing structure, so they'll all be together. Um, the petitioner also proposes developing two conjoined restaurants and a bake and a bank in two outbuildings on the eastern edge of the site. The department would like to note that um at public hearing and in later correspondence, community members express concern regarding the proposed uses potential for worsening nearby congestion. Creating noise nuisance and expanding the self-storage use within the building footprint. Uh, before you use the preliminary site development plan shown at public hearing. Uh, the plan shows three hundred ninety four parking units, including five for electric vehicles. Um, you can see the kind of reimagining of that existing building. Uh, with the different lines indicating how uh those potential uses that I described would be broken up within that existing structure. Um, we have outlines of the two additional bout buildings. Uh, the site shows, the plan shows eight pickleball courts. Um, and then I would like to note three access points. The northern one uses a cross access easement from the northern automobile dealership. Then on the eastern side is an access that exists from Lindbergh. And then on the southern side is a proposed access from East Concord. Uh, the proposed self-storage facility, uh, the department would like to note. Uh, represents a more contextually sensitive and unobtrusive proposal compared to what has come before the department at the commission in the past. Um, it's mixed with other commercial enterprises. Um, it would serve to to store luxury vehicles, including other storage items, and those would be deposited on the rear side of the building. Uh, access to the storage units would be from the front, which is kind of discreetly blended into access to the other uses. Um, and the department would note that square footage is controlled by the C eight planned commercial district procedure. In terms of uh. Concerns about um congestion is primarily on East Concord Road. Uh, the C eight ordinance fifteen thousand four hundred eighty three, which currently governs the site explicitly affirmed that any proposed access from East Concord Road would require a new public hearing. Um, the petitioner hired local firm C B B for a traffic impact study. Um, traffic impact studies uh determine the number of trips generated by a proposed development. Evaluate the impact of those trips on adjacent roadways and assess the ability of motorists to safely enter and exit a site. Um, this traffic impact impact study is included within your packet. Um, C B B determined that existing traffic conditions would not demonstrably worsen with this development. Um, according to their modeling. Um, they did note that on um weekday afternoon peak hours and Saturday peak hours. So um, the East Concord Road does show um signs of congestion. Um, and poor traffic conditions, but the difference between build and no build modeling. Um, were fairly negligible. I'd also like to add that the um. Findings of the traffic impact study uh led the petitioner to revise that access on East Concord Road. I'll point that out on the next slide. So you can see outline in circles in blue, um, the access as. Uh, as proposed has moved further to the west um to prevent. Um, problematic stacking, especially around the intersection of Lindbergh Von Talgi and and East Concord. It's a safe for access. So the full amended preliminary site development plan uh shows three hundred ninety four parking units. Like I said, the relocated East Concord Road further west. Um, the number of pickleball courts was reduced from eight to three. Um, in part to uh reduce conflict with neighbors around noise. And the petitioner has affirmed that they will um have pickleball. Uh, games cease at seven o'clock, uh, they were, they were um. They expressed that uh they would close at nine at public hearing. Um, and uh the site development plan also shows uh improvements connecting to sidewalk infrastructure on Lindbergh. Um, from East Concord Road and then also a path connecting the site to Lindbergh sidewalk to kind of increase. Um, the pedestrian experience at the site. Uh, the department notes that the amended landscaping plan shows um. Appropriate and commendable improvements of the landscaping at the site. Um, they propose filling in that western landscape buffer. Um, and then uh putting in appropriate landscaping along East Concord Road. Um, and on Lindbergh to uh create, you know, improve the aesthetics of the site in a way that the uh the department is happy with. This is just a revisit to some of the architectural elevations shown at public hearing to to help you better contextualize what the site's kind of expected to look like. Uh, the, actually, Greshen, can you skip to the the next slide first and we can go back? So the um. The department is uh expecting the following revisions, many of which are reflected in that advised. Uh, site development plan. Um, department expects connection to the East Concord Road sidewalk infrastructure to sidewalk on Lindbergh Boulevard. Um, improvements to the western buffered yard and front yard landscaping. A reduction of the number of pickleball courts to three and discontinue playing at seven P M. Uh, the development will be permitted, one development complex sign on Lindbergh Boulevard. And one business sign, which should be monument style on East Concord Road. Um, architectural elevations will be required for planning, commission, approval. And one pickup window will be permitted for the restaurant. And if you could cycle back to that previous, thank you. At this time, oh, uh, the this time the department uh is recommending approval. Uh, department finds that the C eight planned commercial district is appropriate for the site. Um, commercial development dominates Lindbergh Boulevard and a range of C three shopping district uses aligned with that context. Uh, the proposed mixture of uses um kind of furthers the goals of the strategic plan for twenty thirteen imagining tomorrow for St. Louis County. Uh, especially with the focus on energizing uh an outdated land use, which is that larger weekends only structure that. Is over ninety thousand square feet. Um, the proposed design of the self-storage facility is appropriate for the location and the C eight planned commercial district provides appropriate regulatory power to govern this particular use. The traffic impact study indicates that the proposed use will not demonstrably increase traffic congestion on nearby roadways. And the preliminary site development plan shows significant improvements to landscaping and lighting at the site. And that this time I'd like to request a motion.
Okay, we need a. A motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I have it, uh, just a couple of questions, this is go. Uh. The uh uh original uh subetol showed a number of retail. Retail retail shops uh that were on the first floor of the uh. The uh main building, is that, is that still on their plan?
Yeah, there was, there's still going to be an expectation for a smaller retail. Um, along with that self-storage and the uh Dogwood Social.
And the outlots, uh, uh, there, there, uh, one will be a restaurant, correct?
It's going to be, so it'll be a financial institution and two conjoined restaurants with one pickup window.
Okay. Uh. And what is the, just curious, what is, what turned out to be the hours of operation of the whole complex?
So, yeah, good question, um. So on. Uh. I had this written down, okay, so like I said about the pickleball, um, those will be um operations at seven. Monday through Thursdays, the hours are from eleven A M to twelve A M and then Friday and Saturday. Uh, and I believe this is, I think this is just for the Dogwood Social, but um is from eleven A M to one A M.
And 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 that's primarily the uh the restaurant there, bar?
For the Dogwood Central, yeah, it's kind of a mixed uh.
Well, and and of course, the the restaurants as well, they may be open pretty late too.
Um, yes, I imagine.
Outlots, is that what you said, Mistress Need?
I'm sorry?
What was your last statement?
I I said it it primarily uh that those hours would apply to the uh the restaurant and bar, the main one. Uh, and and also the outlawed uh restaurants as well, is that correct?
They didn't indicate specific hours for the outlots, but I, we assume they would be sort of typical restaurant hours a little later on the weekends.
Okay, what what about the storage? What hours of operation is that?
They only gave the proposed hours for the Dogwood at public hearing.
Yeah, I I guess I'm a little concerned, you know, the uh, the um. Self-storage can really be uh, it it all depends on how they structure their access to that facility. Uh, and we do have residential right up against that.
So there is a, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's all right.
So we found that the way that that sort of office portion is oriented to the front with a small storefront is is really preferable for when people are going in to, you know, meet about. Renting a unit or whatever, um, or what have you. And then when they do bring their vehicle or their vehicle with 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 stuff or whatever. Um, that what had been the loading dock in the rear. Um, we do like the location because it is behind, it's not visible from Concord or from Lindbergh Road. And then there is still a substantial substantial landscape buffer that exists between that loading dock in the back. The parking that exists in the rear and then this buffer exists between that area and those residences.
Okay, uh, uh, tree buffers are great, sightproof fences are great. But if somebody wants to haul their stuff out of that building at two in the morning, that's going to create noise. Just asking the question.
Does the commission want to consider hours of oper- of operation for the use?
Well, at least we'd like to know what they are. We're we're, I mean, I would certainly think that they ought to be limited. To where they're not uh after. Eleven o'clock at night going in and out of there till the next day. If they purposely put it in the back, I understand why, but. That's really putting the activity right next to those homes there.
I think we can most, uh, we can most definitely add that to between, if it were the will of the commission to um recommend approval of this between now and next week when we bring back the letter of recommendation. Uh, we can most assuredly put in there hours of operation. Um, I mean, seven A M to eleven P M, um, you know, seven days a week or whatever hours the commission would like to to put in there. Um, I think staff, staff found, we didn't find significant concern for the noise because the um use is. Actually a fair distance away from the nearest residences with a significant tree massing. Um, but I also recognize that there could be those off cases in which someone does in fact make a lot of noise in the middle of the night. Um, and as such, we would be happy to put in whichever, any hours of operation that um the commission finds appropriate.
Okay, I mean, I I I. I think that would work for me, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but.
I think seven eleven would be a good play.
Me too.
Three.
We can add that in so that your letter of recommendation is reflective of that.
Can we look at the?
Can we look at the drawing that had the, like, the 3D picture of the? So on the west side, it's still showing that is the that drive onto East Concord? Is this accurate?
They didn't, they did not revise the rendering to show the relocated entrance. So what you're looking at right now does show the curb cut onto East Concord at its original location. So in the revision, I don't know Gretchen, if you can kind of follow where that kind of lime green car is. That's about where the curb cuts proposed to be in the revised site plan.
So I'm just trying to remember where the houses are, but you know, across East Concord is not trees.
Right, correct, there are homes, Von Talge is there, and then there's a church. And then there are, there do begin to be residences on on East Concord there.
There's not a lot of them right there, right? I think there's maybe only a couple.
I think most of them, yeah, if you go to the aerial, I think most of them front towards these internal streets, but there are a couple with John East Concord.
And so this will, the the new location would be opposite, really this 4111, this fairly large parcel is where the proposed.
Correct access point.
Yeah, access point will be across from that 4111, which is, I believe, a religious institution.
Right, it's a church. So one, I guess what I'm wondering about is just the amount of traffic that is right there. And if they said they've done a study already, so does that mean that St. Louis County has approved it? Or are they just saying that that study was enough? Or how does that work?
So the process is, in their preliminary comments that we received from county transportation, they requested that a traffic study be done. So that was always going to need to happen, whether or not we we in the commission found it necessary now. But that traffic study will then be reviewed by county transportation specifically compared to what they know and what their concerns on East Concord are. So if there are further revisions that county transportation needs or additional counts or data that they need, they still have the ability to go and get, to have the petitioner get that additional information.
So they're not, I guess, I what my concern is that the way that that side drive is situated, people leave and they're going to turn right. And they're going to drive through the residential area to go to Tessa Ferry because it's going to be so much more convenient than turning left, waiting for Von Taggi. And I don't know, I guess I'm just saying, I I don't see how it's not going to increase the traffic in the residential area.
If I understand you correctly, the traffic study does anticipate that there will be more traffic generated at this site, but that it will not decrease the level of service of going eastbound or going westbound on on Concord Road. So will there be more vehicles? The traffic study says yes, more trips, but it's not going to have a negative impact based on the flow throughout the day and the distance. So they did, what the traffic study did find is that that curb cut was where it was originally proposed, there would be some issues with stacking and people queuing up. But scooting it to the to the west a little bit allows for more of that flexibility, but that it doesn't decrease the level of service as and as the trips have increased or will increase.
It, Mel, is it fair to say that what they're, what the county is saying, or what the study is saying is not so much that it won't increase the problem? It it the problem is bad enough, the way it is, and it, you won't notice the difference, is that right?
Right, there's not a noticed, an anticipated decrease. That's the level of service. So what we experience as motorists, you know, driving down the roadway, A through F is the scale of of level of service. So A is essentially the free flow of traffic. Someone is getting a lot of echo. Sorry.
That was not me, by the way.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so A through F is the level of service. A is free flow, basically, you're just going down the roadway, nothing, you know, the other cars don't have to slow down, everyone's just driving along. And then F is like standstill traffic. A through C are what we find to be generally tolerable. I can look at the traffic study to see what exactly it was, but this impact would not degrade that level of service from what it is right now. Wait, I think it might be.
Mr. Hilsinger, I'm afraid it may be, I'm afraid it may be you, because I see you on here twice for the the cousin, the feedback.
Does that address your question, Mr. Snead?
I'm sorry?
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I I I think, yeah, it does. I I was just trying to clarify part of what you were saying, that's all.
So I have another question, and that is, the although the traffic would be moving freely, the homes on East Concord are pretty close, many of them to East Concord. And I guess I'm just stating that it seems like the noise, traffic would definitely increase for those homes. And I'm not, I don't know that that's enough to keep us from doing that. But I would just say, I I'm sure that the noise would increase. One question I have is about the pickleball courts. I think I saw something on the news a couple months back about a club that had pickleball courts that the neighbors, ever since they opened, is it a country club? Ever since they opened, they've not been able to use them because there's some kind of a dispute. And I don't know if that's in St. Louis County or municipality. I was thinking it was maybe in Glendale.
I'm not familiar, so I wonder if that is in a municipality. I don't think we have a lot of pickleball courts on, like, not outside of county parks right now in unincorporated St. Louis County that I know of.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was wondering about. Do we have a lot of pickleball courts that are outside? And do we have any issues? I guess there's a noise ordinance that they would have to comply with.
That's true, just just like all development, they in all, you know, outdoor recreational uses, generally, they would have to comply with with the noise control code.
Only thing that I would say is, if I lived right there, and if it was continuous noise all day long until 7:00 PM, I don't really care that it stops at 7:00. That significantly changes the use of my home. Like, I would no longer sit outside if I had to listen to pickleball all day long. So I'm trying to figure out, well, how loud is loud? You know, how loud loud is it? Because do we have parks where it's this close to homes? And how far are the pickleball court courts to homes, like on those drawings? Is that 50 feet or 100 feet? How far is that?
I can find that out. I think that the buffer that exists there, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, is maybe 100 feet.
100 feet.
So there's a 100-foot wooded buffer between the the western property line of the subject site and then their parking lot, the edge of the parking lot behind the building, and then probably.
Put up that layout again and show.
Yeah, the site plan. So it's about 140 feet from the pickleball courts to the property line. And then, you know, the rear yard.
Courts are in the very back where there's three little rec.
Yeah, absolutely, correct.
And if you look at the overview of this area, those are right behind residences. If we could go to the the more general plan that shows.
The aerial.
Yeah, the aerial.
Okay, so that low offset back there in the building is right behind these these homes that you can see roundabout or turn inside the subdivision, and these are all homes that line that whole red line.
Here Gretchen, can you approve my request to annotate? So this, if this is coming up, this yellow, this is about where the pickleball courts are.
I'm not seeing that.
Oh, there we go, now it's starting to show up.
It was a little delayed. And then, let me go in yellow. And then from there to here, this red line, if it shows up, that's 140 feet.
Is there a fence back there also?
I believe there, currently, there's a fence that exists along the edge of the property line, or excuse me, the parking lot. And I believe they intend to replace that with a with a sightproof fence.
Which if that's not a condition in the in the ordinance, we can also add that as a condition that a sightproof, but a sightproof or solid fence shall be constructed along that, there along the edge of that parking to both, to additionally aid with deflecting noise from from either direction. You can also require it along East Concord there, at least in that sort of that that corner back there to help deflect sound and keep that that sound within the within the area.
So you would put it along the parking lot rather than along the property line?
I would, because I, at that point, with the way that the sound would probably be more, the way that the sound waves would be closer together, and it would be right there, you deflect more, so that by the time you got to the property line, the sound is going to be bigger and more, the sound waves are going to be sort of have expanded by that point. Additionally, with that, they are proposing some additional plantings back there already. See how there's that sort of small void there in the plantings? They are proposing to to fully fill that back in with new plantings. So that in and of itself will also help to buffer, buffer and muffle the sounds. So I think that combined, keeping that fence closer in would be a better sound barrier.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, just just a comment.
Yeah.
When you're talking about pickleball here, how much louder is the pickleball than a tennis court? Baseball field? Golfing? And I'm sure there's a couple more, lacrosse, where you might have a school right backed up against this, if this was a school getting ready to go in here.
There's studies on it. Pickleball is louder than tennis. It's a solid paddle that hits a plastic ball.
Right. It's, it's a lot more dense than golf, I can assure you. We don't even talk on a golf course.
Well, that's too small to be a golf course, anyway. I think that the the majority of noise is going to be the spectators, and I don't think pickleball is a huge spectator sport.
Right.
More more likely, it's like table tennis or something.
I like the idea of the fence, and I understand what Jacob said about just diffusing the sound by having it be closer to the action.
Well, you want noise, where I live, there's a soft, they play softball right behind my house. And they just flat tell me, just put up with it or move. That's that's Eureka's idea of dealing with the noise. They have the Eureka Days, they set up a van out there and play music, and they say, well, we'll cut it off at 11 o'clock, but I got to listen to it from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. My dogs have to be in the house because they can't go in the backyard. But they're, and I was here before they developed all that.
I think if we can re- resolve it before the problem, because af- after it's built and it's operating, then the neighbors are, the residents are, are, it's up to them to complain enough that something is done. And I think that that shows that maybe we didn't do what we were supposed to do. So I'd rather address it now than have the neighbors have to address it later.
The only thing I would add is maybe we get some film of a pickleball game and just see what the noise level is instead of, I mean, we all got our own idea of how loud it'd be, and, you know, some people's idea of loudness is different than other people's.
So from a Google search that I just conducted, it says that the typical, what I'm reading is that typical decibel levels from a pickleball court can range from 45 to 70 decibels. Depending on, you know, depending just on the exact nature of the situation, 70 decibels would would be somewhat equivalent to what a vacuum cleaner sounds like, if it was a fully a 70 decibel sort of, sort of situation. So, you know, and that's where there is, you know, 140 feet, there is a fairly good distance with a, you know, with a a fence and trees and with the generalized out nature of noise in a suburban context in a in a neighborhood. I think that a lot of this noise is going to be diffused. Not to say that it will be completely inaudible. But that's where we think that the 7:00 PM, the 7:00 PM cutoff time is is a good cutoff time for to to preserve the tranquility for adjoining residents to be able to, you know, enjoy their outdoor, their outdoor, the outdoor nature of their properties as well.
Jacob? Yeah, just just a follow-up question. The major portion of this building is sort of other, other activities and restaurants and bars and stuff like that, correct?
Uh, yes, the the majority of the structure, or no, I don't want to say majority, about a third of it is a, is a restaurant bar, most of which the use is mostly interior.
And I I think what Gary said before is probably a contributing factor is going to make this a lot louder than what maybe we think. Because the spectator part coming from the bar, they'll probably end up having a patio out there or something. I think that's where most of the concern might be, is that it's not just the the ping pong noise going back and forth. It's the noise coming out of the the spectators sort of thing, okay? I could be wrong, but the, you know, nature is is the way it is. That's that's who's going to be out there watching the pickleballs.
Okay, anyone else have anything to add?
Is there, just on that point, is there outside dining?
Their patio area is shown on the other side of the pickleball court. So when this was a weekends only and previously when it was HQ, they had sort of a outdoor storage loading area between the existing structure and Concord Road. So that's what they're proposing to reuse to be their outdoor seating area. So if you go back to the plan, Gretchen, I think it's labeled on there. So it is on the right side of the pickleball court, so sort of, yeah, if you hop down, no, down lower. I don't know where it is.
Are you annotating it, Mel?
I thought I was, okay, here we go. Here it is.
Yeah.
That's the patio.
So and it's in, and it is, it's actually somewhat enclosed, there's actually a roof over it, and there is a, a wall of sorts along Concord. So it's, so it's kind of a, it's kind of like an in, like a indoor/outdoor space.
But still adjacent to the pickleball.
I have a question. Do you know the decibel level of traffic?
That is, that is a good question. Let's see, I can.
The chart I was looking at had had city as one of them.
Typical highway traffic noise ranges from 70 to 80 decibel levels, and this is information coming from the Federal Highway Administration. Typical highway traffic noise ranges from seventy to eighty decibel levels. And this is information coming from the federalhighwayadministration.gov website. Um, so a typical highway is seventy to eighty decibels. Um, that's measured at a distance of fifteen meters from the highway. So actually right along the highway would actually be quite a bit higher.
Okay. So th- this, what we're thinking would be less than, at its worst, would be less than traffic. Uh, the, the traffic, the highway traffic going through that.
Would be my generalized understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
James?
I'm just weighing one more thing. I just wanted to make sure. So as far as the traffic and, uh, entrances and so forth, that's going to require a separate hearing? And is that something that we manage or does that go to the traffic department or how does that work?
It wouldn't be a hearing, but since the county department of transportation has the jurisdiction to grant new access onto a county road, they have to get what's called a special use permit to, to create that new curb cut. Uh, so that traffic study will have to be done and dusted and have all the information that CODOC, county transportation needs before they can approve that special use permit. And these are things that also happen during and after we have reviewed and approved and brought to the planning commission for their approval, the site development plan. So the generalities of those requirements have been, you know, set by county transportation. The traffic study initially has addressed as much of that as possible, but there will be further discussion and refinement of that traffic study as the specific, all of the specifics become more real. But there is not another meeting regarding, um, the curb cut.
Well, Mel. You know, as far as that curb cut, I was here in, in ninety-one when it went from Don Dard Pontiac to, uh, home quarters.
Mm-hmm.
And the residents were pretty adamant about no curb cut. And we, uh, we gave into that wish, but I don't think there was a person afterwards, after home quarters opened up, that didn't feel we, uh, had made a mistake by not having the curb cut. It just really congested, uh, South Lindbergh with one entrance and one exit.
But Mel, i- isn't it also, uh, the curb cut has to be approved by the, uh, uh, highway, uh, but.
By the department of.
They'll essentially, they'll essentially accept that traffic study, uh, as it's not gonna impact the traffic in that area. Isn't that correct too?
If they evaluate the traffic study the same way we did, and their main concern is will this degrade the level of service? They would come to the same conclusion that, that we had, that no, this curb cut, this generation won't degrade level of service.
That might help explain the process because whatever the traffic study says, I've, I, I believe most of the time, majority of the time, uh, it's accepted as that's the condition.
Okay. Um, did we get a motion on this? I was.
I have Todd as the first and Sandy as the second.
Okay, any amendments to the motion?
So the motion would, would I assume would include the, um, addition of a fence, uh, along that, um, close in to the building along the, the concrete to help mitigate with noise along the rear as well as those hours of operation from seven AM to eleven PM for the proposed self-storage facility.
Jacob, I was thinking that that fence was going to be on both, both sides of that pickleball court. Was that wrong?
No, that, that we will, that can be absolutely yes.
Cornering on the corner. Sure, absolutely.
We could also address more of this once state review, correct?
That's true. When we are reviewing the site plan, we hope to have totally resolved this and that when we bring the site plan to you for approval, you'll be able to see how that, that is addressed and mitigated.
Okay. Anything else to add? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
We have one, one nay. Let the record show, seven to one. And we'll go on to, uh, one letter for approval, PC twenty-eight dash twenty-three, Chris and Angela Corkwright.
So the commission may recall, this is a request for an amended development in the CA for a half acre site, the former Afton Police Precinct. Um, the petitioner wants to reuse the building for the warehousing, sale and storage of appliances. Uh, the commission recommended approval at their November sixth executive meeting and the letter we've brought before you is consistent with that approval.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there, was there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move for a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Now we'll take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. And, uh, we'll go to correspondence. Uh, PC twenty-five dash twenty-one, DLJ Lindberg LLC.
So this is PC twenty-five dash twenty-one, DLJ Lindberg LLC. The request is to remove the requirement for a architectural dome for the financial, financial institution and reduce the setback requirement for the primary and ATM structures. Uh, the zoning is CA Plank Commercial District on a point eight acre tract on the north side of Lindbergh Boulevard, approximately three hundred and sixty feet east of Wisteria Lane. As you may recall, the site is located in South County. You can see the site outlined in red on the right. Here's the view of the revised architectural elevations. Um, the dome is no longer present. And this is a, uh, the new revised site development plan. Um, the site design was shifted, uh, slightly to the east, which, um, caused, uh, a need for reduction and setback for that ATM in the proposed one-story building from Lindbergh. The department recommends approval, finding that the request, um, both appropriate and minor in scope. The architectural dome was associated with a previous tenant and new architectural elevations remain well considered and visually pleasing. Um, and finds that the reduction and setbacks is unobtrusive and facilitates the expansion of landscaping west of the development's proposed drive aisle. Uh, at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Next item, uh, resolution of intent to hold a public hearing to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to regulations for accessory uses, structures and site design criteria.
So I, I think that for some of the planning commissioners, this may be the first resolution we've brought, um, to you. So let me explain what this is for. Um, the zoning ordinance says that the way to initiate what we would call a text amendment of the zoning ordinance, literally changing the words that are in it. The process for initiating that is for the planning commission or the county council to adopt a resolution of intent to hold a public hearing on the topic. So the resolution is the tool by which you decide what, you know, should we hold a public hearing and what is the topic? So the resolution lays out not a recommendation on what, you know, changing this to that, but generally what might this text amendment involve? So this reseller, this text amendment would be sort of twofold. The first, um, portion that it would address are accessory structures and uses. So every zoning district has permitted uses and whatever that permitted use is, the structure in which that occurs is what we would call the primary structure. So in your single family home on your lot, your house is your primary structure. Your detached garage is what we would call an accessory structure. So say you have a, you know, an office building, that's your primary structure. Maybe you have a, you know, a shed with your parking lot salt in it. That's, that's an accessory structure. So the zoning ordinance, what it's clear on is that accessory structures have to be subordinate to primary structures customarily found in conjunction with that primary use, um, serving only to further the utilization of that structure. It also says that detached above ground structures in totality, every accessory structure you have, that combined square footage cannot exceed, um, seven percent of your lot area. Um, would you go to the next slide Gretchen? Okay, thank you. So typical accessory structures, like I mentioned, detached garages, sheds, swimming pools are also, you know, while they may not be up in the air like we expect the structure to be, they do count towards that accessory structure, um, lot coverage and, and solar panels, stuff like that. Detached from your home, not where the primary use is occurring. What we've experienced in the past, you know, ten, fifteen years is an increase in requests for what we would call oversized accessory structures, primarily detached garages that often are as big as the home or even larger than the home. And since the code is not very, very explicit in terms of a size limitation, um, or a percentage limitation for those structures themselves, in twenty seventeen, the county adopted a formal interpretation limiting those structures to either four hundred square feet or no more than fifty percent of the square footage of the primary structure. So that put a standard and adopted standard for us, uh, basically a policy. But if folk proposed structures larger than that, their form of relief was to, to petition the board of zoning adjustment. So we've been working with this interpretation, basically a little, uh, appendix to the zoning ordinance that is our, um, you know, professional opinion on what the code is intending. We've been using that for, you know, pushing six years now. And so we find it's appropriate for us to dig a little bit deeper into that issue to consider, um, either, you know, codifying something more specific. So that is the first part of what this text amendment, uh, could involve. Are there any questions on that aspect of the resolution? So the second part is a little more broad. It generally relates to design criteria throughout the zoning ordinance. There are a couple of things that the zoning ordinance, um, the few things that could be clarified, I'll skip to the second sort of set of bullet points. The zoning ordinance has landscape buffering yards, but they don't fully address every use type we see. And the, the zoning ordinance also has limited, um, references to fencing honestly at all. And, you know, the planning commission is one of the, you know, you, you have also experienced that fencing is something we talk about all the time and it is, and is a critical, um, aspect of site design. The aspects that the code is generally silent on are trash enclosures. We really only regulate the appearance and location of trash enclosures when a property owner opts into a planned district or special procedure and the commission is able to make recommendations on, on that. The code as it's written doesn't say anything about trash enclosures for what we would call straight zone, um, developments in straight districts. And then last, there doesn't say anything about wheel stops. Wheel stops, you know, at the end of a parking space, um, can be used as a tool to help, you know, control, um, at parking a little bit more. And it's really just not addressed in the zoning ordinance. So these are topics that we want to also dig into a little bit more and, and, um, see what our peers are doing and, and make sure that we have the best practices in, in our zoning ordinance. So that, that if you adopt this resolution tonight, we will schedule a public hearing, a petition for the January public hearing to have, to have the public hearing on it. So we will have a little bit more information, this sort of same general information. Um, and then we would be able to hear from the public or, or anyone else on the matter. But tonight, adopting this resolution gets that public hearing scheduled.
Okay, um, commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I think it's a good idea.
Make a motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Eight zero. Any, uh, site plans?
Do not have any site plans.
Site plans? We'll go to the Good of the Order, eleven A, appointment of nominating committee. Uh, I've turned that over to Lou Cunningham. And he'll be getting with, uh, some other commissioners on that topic.
So Mr. Cunningham, and do, do you know who else Wayne or?
No, I don't know what he's gonna.
Okay.
He's handled it before, so he said he would work on it next week.
All right. Um, and before we go into our monthly education topic, I don't think there's a slide with the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule, but it was included in your packet. It general, and I can send it out. I'll send it out as a, as a sole attachment. Um, but generally it follows the format of the first Monday of the month is the executive meeting. The second Monday of the month is public hearing. I think the only months where that, um, is not the case is January because of the Martin Luther King Junior holiday, the executive meeting would be on, oh, excuse me, in New Year's. On January the eighth would be the executive meeting and the public hearing would be a little bit later on the twenty-second. Then it's standard, standard, standard until we get to September because Labor Day is early. The September executive meeting would be September ninth and the public hearing on the sixteenth. So I will send that out, but we have decided to just give you the whole, um, the whole year of, of the tentative meeting dates. These can always be changed based on the, basically the, the pleasure of the chair or, you know, if we don't have any petitions for public hearing, we don't, you know, we won't have it, et cetera. But this is the general, um, meeting schedule for next year. So now we come to everyone's favorite part of the executive meeting, our monthly education for you all. We thought that this month we would tell you about the, uh, the other board and slash commission that we staff, the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So I think everyone is familiar with the idea that there is a St. Louis County Board of Zoning Adjustment, but we want to make sure that you all understand what their role is, how they are similar to you guys, how they are different to you all, and how you all push forward the shared goal of improving the built environment for our, for our citizens. So on the left, you can see the BZA membership. I'll go into that a little more, but there are three members, Angelia Bills, she's the chair. She's been on the board, um, for a while since before I started, so before twenty seventeen. Justin Randall is the vice chair. He's actually an urban planner. And then Vince Nutt is the most recent member of the planning, or of, excuse me, of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. He's been on for, I don't know, maybe six months. And then, um, Debbie Nesbit is the planning technician who operates as the BZA's coordinator. So similar to how Evelyn is the planning commission coordinator, reviews applications, does the filing, um, works with you all to make sure you have what you need. Debbie does that for the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So before we talk about the St. Louis County Board of Zoning Adjustment, I want to back up much further and talk about generally what is a Board of Zoning Adjustment? The BZA as a concept is not unique to St. Louis County. It's not unique to Missouri. It's a, you know, it, most jurisdictions have a Board of Zoning Adjustment. So it is a creature in Missouri that's been created by state statute intended to act as a quasi judicial entity that exists between the administrative state and civil courts. So by the administrative state, I mean, the planning department and transportation and public works as members of the administration. We administer the code, but we cannot make determinations outside of the code the way that the courts could. But the Board of Zoning Adjustment exists, it exists in the middle. So they are able to, um, adjudicate issues the, similar to the way a judge in a courtroom would, but on very specific matters for, for a very important purpose. So what state statute says is that they've empowered the board to vary or modify the application of any of the regulations or provisions of such ordinance relating to the construction or alteration of buildings or structures or the use of land so that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. So essentially what a Board of Zoning Adjustment can do is grant a, what we call a variance from zoning ordinance regulations, um, when they can, um, within their purview. So if you go to the next slide, the board hears requests for relief from the stripped, strict application of the code. If we applied the code just the way it's written by the letter of the law, exactly the, the, the way we read it, sometimes that could mean that property is rendered just completely unusable because the way all of the requirements stacked up, there's just nothing left to do. So one example is, uh, in the non-urban district, there's a front yard setback of fifty feet. It's the biggest front yard setback the zoning ordinance has. If you had a property zoned NU and you had, you know, you were on kind of the end of. NU and you had, you know, you were on kind of the end of the block on a corner with three rows around you, you would have three 50-foot front yard setbacks. And depending on how big your lot is, that could preclude basically any developable area from existing anymore. The board is there to hear cases like that and vary from those requirements to say, okay, instead of 50 foot, you, you only want to be 40 feet from the roadway. That's reasonable because of this scenario you're in. So the state statute gives the board the, the power to hear requests like that. It's not, um, they're very site-specific and, and contextual. It's just for that piece of property. So when they say that, okay, well, maybe 40 feet's okay here instead of 50 feet, that doesn't apply to every NU property. That's just for that parcel and whatever they're proposing to build at that time. So this chart down at the bottom shows sort of the general, um, permit process. People submit their documents to transportation and public works. The Office of Transportation or Zoning Enforcement in Public Works reviews those permits per the zoning ordinance regulations. And when they say, no, you don't meet this requirement, if the property owner cannot revise to meet that requirement, they're, they're sort of stuck. So the Board of Zoning Adjustment is the entity that basically is, is, um, the last resort for people when the code just won't allow what they, what they want to do. The board can grant relief from those people who are stuck there in the permitting process, but only when they demonstrate a unique hardship. So what do I mean when I say hardship? A hardship is a land use-based circumstance that is specific to that property as well. So the board doesn't consider financial hardships. They don't consider sort of personal circumstances that have, that have come up since someone bought a property. A hardship has to be based on, on that piece of property. So it has to be unusual or peculiar to that property and different from that, uh, throughout the zoning district or throughout the neighborhood. It also, they also have to show that as a practical matter, the property cannot be used for that permitted use without coming into conflict with those, um, restrictions. So in the example of the non-urban, the property owner would come to the board and say, these three front yard setbacks are just keeping me from being able to build this house. Can I please have, you know, 40-foot front yard setbacks to create a buildable, you know, a, a buildable area on my parcel? So these are some of the considerations that the board, um, has when they're listening to what is, you know, what's the hardship and what is the variance that's requested? The first is how substantial is this variance related to what the requirement is? Is 40 feet in lieu of 50 that big a deal? They're not asking for one foot in lieu of 50 feet. So how much of a variance, how much are we actually varying from the requirement? Additionally, what does approving this variance mean for the neighborhood as a whole? Would this result in increased density or so many more residents that it could impact St. Louis's county, St. Louis County's ability to provide services or MSD's ability to, you know, complete their functions? Um, that's not typically a huge concern in St. Louis County just because we're, we're generally built out. The third is whether that variance, whether issuing that variance would change the character of the neighborhood because at its core, the board is only supposed to grant things that keep in the spirit of the code. So if they grant something that would allow a building totally out, you know, out of character with the rest of the block, that's, that's not the intention of, of, of their, um, jurisdiction there. Additionally, they have to consider whether or not that difficulty can be mitigated by some other, some other, um, you know, some, some other method other than the variance. If they've shown a deck, you know, projecting into the side yard and it doesn't meet the side yard setback, can they project it into the rear yard instead? Can they do something different? And then last and most critically, is justice going to be served by allowing this variance? So that's justice for the applicant. That's justice for, you know, the neighbors, the other permitted uses in the area, and just the, you know, the general welfare of the county. But primarily granting the variance is intended to make sure that the spirit of the code is, is, um, remains. So we recognize that the letter, you know, the code isn't perfect. The letter of the law, um, can create scenarios where, where things are unjust, but granting the variance should always be in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance. So our Board of Zoning Adjustment, I mentioned, has three members. They are similar to the planning commission, are appointed by the county executive, and they are also subject to confirmation by the county council. Additionally, the majority of that board is supposed to be made up of, of residents of unincorporated St. Louis County. So two of them reside in St. Louis County. And similar to the planning commission, their jurisdiction is only in the unincorporated parts of the county. And then we are their staff. So as I mentioned, Debbie Nesbit does a lot of the, uh, the administrative work to make sure that they are able to function. Gretchen, right now, is the staff member who prepares their presentations and any staff reports, um, that we present to them. And then the two of them, um, run their meetings. Abby is always there, um, at the Board of Zoning Adjustment meetings, making sure that, um, she's able to answer any qu- technical questions they have. Um, that's the, that's the generalities of our Board of Zoning Adjustment. A lot of the requests they see are on single-family homes. They, of course, see requests on commercial properties, but unlike the planning commission, they see a lot of development that's on, on single-family detached, uh, developments. So here's the sort of zoning, Board of Zoning Adjustment process. How it typically starts, as I alluded to, is someone applies for a building permit and then up in the build, in public works, they're told, no, you know, you don't meet the code, please revise. If they say, no, I can't revise because of my hardship, then they apply to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Debbie puts their request on an agenda. We notice it in the newspaper. We send postcards to, um, to the neighbors. We visit the site and take site photos, and then we have the meeting. If we have any technical advice to present, we will do that. But then the petitioner, you know, and it's, it's, it's similar to the planning commission's hearing, um, to the executive meetings in a way. Um, the neighbors can come and speak and then the board makes their decision. If they grant the variance, the applicant takes that back to public works and gets their permit. If the Board of Zoning Adjustment does not grant the variance, then the applicant's only form of relief is to then go to civil court. So the Board of Zoning Adjustment is acting as sort of a middle courtroom in a way, but if they choose not to grant that relief, there is still another option, one last sort of administrative option for the applicant, and that is to go to, to civil court. So Gretchen is going to run through, um, examples of some typical variance types that the board sees. They're probably seeing about 100 petitions, uh, a year lately.
Yeah, we're up to 90 this year.
Okay.
Um, and we're not done. They will have one more in December. So the first typical and mo- probably most common variance that the Board of Zoning Adjustment does see is for yard setbacks. So in each zoning district, there is a front, side, and rear yard setback, um, requirements for structures that are over six feet in height. So some of the hardships that the Board of Zoning Adjustment may see, um, is due to an irregular lot shape, um, having more than one front yard, and just topographical or other conditions such as, um, just a major drop in a backyard. Um, sometimes easements will also get in the way of that, um, for individuals from being able to meet setbacks. Um, another yard-related item that we deal with, um, for a variance is for lot coverage. As Mel mentioned earlier, for accessory structures, they cannot exceed seven percent of the total area. So this does not include the primary structure, but it can include garages, sheds, decks, and swimming pools. Another variance that we see quite frequently through the BZA is sign variances. Um, so typically it's for a variance either for the size of the sign or the width of the sign. Um, and they, for the petitioner, they have to show that there is a hardship. Um, hardships could include that it's a smaller sign would be difficult for an individual to find the service. So if you, they've had one on Manchester Road before, um, seeking a sign variance because Manchester Road is so congested that it would be hard for them to meet the minimum requirements. Um, and also they have to show that it's not going to be, um, a detriment to the public welfare. So it's not going to be outrageous and oversized just to be oversized. Um, and it's also not going to serve the applicant as a convenience. Um, so when we get sign, um, variance requests, the planning department does create, um, reports, as you can see on the left of the screen. This is what a typical sign report looks like for the Board of Zoning Adjustment, just kind of giving the permitted and the, um, requested sign size and what our recommendation would be. Another type of variance that we see is legal non-conforming uses and structures. As Mel mentioned there, typically the Board of Zoning Adjustment does see single-family homes primarily. Um, along Telegraph, there are a stretch of homes where they are technically zoned C2, and that was done prior, these homes were already built prior to the 1965 zoning ordinance adoption. So these homes became legal non-conforming. Um, so they technically have a C2 zoning, but they're a residential home. When these individuals want to do anything to their structure, such as a deck, um, they have to go before the Board of Zoning Adjustment to get a variance to do the work on their homes.
So the last one, um, and this is not a, as category, not a frequent type of request that goes before the Board of Zoning Adjustment, except in the one example that I've already sort of given. So if the county has an interpretation of the zoning ordinance, which can be pretty simple, it could be us saying, oh, you know, that definitely, the definition of that use we've determined is this. It's not in the code, but we held it to be this. Or it can be really formal, like the interpretation of the zoning ordinance relating to oversized accessory structures that I mentioned before. So when we've made an interpretation and say, you know, this is what we've determined the code says, an applicant can apply to the board for a variance from that interpretation. So technically they're doing that every time someone petitions the board because they're saying that what we've interpreted and put into the code is, you know, unduly burdensome to them. Or specifically, this interpretation that we've adopted is unduly burdensome. So that the main type we see, if you go to the next slide, is, is for overs- oversized detached, um, structures. So as I stated, um, they're limited to 400 square feet or no greater than 50% of the footprint of the structure because that's intended to keep that structure subordinate to the primary structure, clearly subordinate, and only there to further the utilization of that primary structure. But as you can see here, this petitioner has a, you know, 1,600 square foot home. They wanted to propose a 1,500 square foot detached garage and covered patio. I don't know what the result of this petition was, but they had to prove to the board that this garage in the back served only the further, further the utilization of the, the home in the front. So this type of request is, you know, does not meet that interpretation and the Board of Zoning Adjustment is the entity that can grant them relief from the, the strictures of that interpretation. So one, you know, a couple of ways that the Board of Zoning Adjustment and the Planning Commission connect or don't connect or, you know, facilitate each other's work are, lies within the, the purview that you both have. So the Planning Commission is empowered to grant conditional use permits, to grant a property owner additional land use rights and, and write conditions and propose conditions of development tied to that, uh, conditional use. What the board, excuse me, what the Planning Commission can't do is reduce through a CUP, the requirements of the underlying, underlying zoning district. So you can grant a CUP for a restaurant with a drive-through, but you can't reduce the setbacks of the regular restaurant building because it's still beholden to, let's say, the C2 regulations underneath. In that scenario, the Board of Zoning Adjustment can grant a variance for a site development plan for a development after the Planning Commission has acted. On the converse, the Planning Commission has the ability to vary all sorts of those design criteria in a planned commercial district. So it's really, really rare to see a property zone, see a planned commercial district, need to go to the board for a variance because the Planning Commission already has the ability to build that flexibility into the site-specific ordinance, um, through that procedure. So some specific examples of this, some of the members may recall PC 1622, Kim George is, uh, a childcare center on Parker Road just west of Bell Fountain. She was proposing a childcare center. She needed a conditional use for that. The zoning ordinance says that childcare centers have to be located on, on tracks of 30,000 square feet or larger. She didn't have that. So while she could come to the Planning Commission and ask for her CUP, she couldn't do it without also asking the Board of Zoning Adjustment for a variance from that minimum lot size requirement. Similar to the example I sort of started to give back in 2019, when the Panera was proposed on Gravoy Road just west of Tesson Ferry, the Planning Commission granted them a CUP for a fast food restaurant, um, with a drive-through. But the Planning Commission couldn't reduce their parking setback, um, from the budding residential property. Only the Board of Zoning Adjustment could reduce that parking lot setback inherent to the C2. So that's what Panera did. They got their CUP. Then when they were in site development plan review, they had to prove to the Board of Zoning Adjustment that they had enough of a hardship. Essentially, their lot was pretty tight. There was just no way to design the site to meet that regulation. The last example is telecom towers. The Planning Commission sees them all the time. The zoning ordinance says that telecom towers have to be set back from residential property, a distance equivalent to the height of the tower. Sometimes on a large lot, that's well and easy to do. Um, telecom towers sometimes are located closer, you know, closer to properties. For instance, the one on Britton G. Road, the, the Tesson, Tesson Ferry Ameren Tower by Tesson Ridge. It's way tucked back, you know, in that, uh, substation area, but technically it is not set back a distance equivalent to its own height from the very southeastern corner of that residential development. So they have to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment to say, you know, I got my property rights, but I can't meet this design criteria because of X, Y, and Z hardship. So those are some examples of, um, you know, times the board, you know, acts before the commission. Sometimes the board acts after you all to help, um, facilitate your work. But, um, yeah, they've, they've got a different role, a different job, but, uh, all, all, all valuable. So I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have. I know that we owe you the slides of our monthly education generally, so we'll add this, um, this session to that and get it out to y'all. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
Jacob, do you have anything to add?
No. Great job, Mel. Great job, Gretchen. Um, I think that next month, our, I think we're going to do conditional use permits, um, as our next topic of, of, um, education next month. So that's what we'll be covering. And then perhaps in February, we'll then do the sort of inverse of that describing the what, you know, C8 and M3 procedures and why those, um, you know, how and why those operate. Um, so those are the next two upcoming ones. Um, yeah.
Unless someone has a topic that they're dying to learn more about.
Burning to learn about right now.
Push that to the front. But anytime you guys think about it, you know, if there's a topic, you're like, oh, they're talking about that. I'm not really sure. Um, and if you don't want to bring it up in this venue, you know, feel free to just reach out.
Okay. With nothing else, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero and we'll see everyone next week.
See you in the chamber. Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it.
Have a nice week, everyone.
You too.